Budget work session and I am going to hand the server to Harpreet if you would present for us please.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. This is the first budget work session of the fiscal year 2022 budget process. And today's work session, we will present the economic outlook for 2021. The five-year forecast. My slides, okay, you'll see that. The five-year forecast for the general fund and the enterprise funds and review some important dates of the fiscal year 2022 budget process. But before I present the economic outlook, I would like to review the budget policies and principles. The budget policies and principles for the city of Roswell remain the same and we continue to follow them to maintain good fiscal health. It is our policy to maintain a 25% reserve in the general fund, which is greater than or equal to three months of operating expenditures. This reserve is set aside to help maintain the city's essential operations during any unforeseen events or circumstances. We also have a reserve policy for our enterprise funds, which are the solid base fund, our water and sewer fund, stormwater fund and the recreation participation fund. These funds are required to maintain a reserve of 10% of the unrestricted fund balance from the prior fiscal year. We also strive to maintain a quick ratio of one or higher in the enterprise funds. In addition to these policies, enterprise funds are required to have revenues of 101% of projected expenses. And if the fund has an outstanding debt, then the revenues shall be 105% of the projected expenses. Each year, while developing the budget for the next fiscal year, we adhere to two principles. The first principle is to ensure that the general fund is structurally balanced, which means that current year operating expenditures are funded with current year revenues. The second principle that we follow is that any reserves above policy are used only for one-time expenses. So these are the policies and guiding principles on which our budget is developed each year. We now move on to the next section of the presentation where I will present a few slides on the 2021 economic outlook for Georgia and the Atlanta metro area. And I have highlighted a few points on this slide that have been taken from UGA's Georgia Economic Outlook put together by the Terry College of Business. According to the report, economic recovery is expected to continue mainly driven by consumer spending, a booming housing market and Federal Reserve policies. The housing market and the home construction industry experienced a V-shaped recovery during 2020 and will be a large factor in driving Georgia's growth in 2021. And as you can see, there are other points in here, there are other highlights, like for instance, so the GDP for Georgia is expected to grow by 4% in 2021. And the peak of the economic recovery according to experts is expected to happen in the third and the fourth quarters of 2021. And 2022 was expected to be a much better year in terms of how the economy is going to perform. On the next few slides, I have some charts that show the trend in some key economic indicators. This first chart here shows the percentage change in employment in metro Atlanta over the last year. And as you can see, there has been an improvement in the employment rates since April of 2020. However, they have not reached the pre-pandemic levels right now. And the data that is shown here on this chart is as of October 2020. One more, actually, one more month of data has come in since I put these slides together and the numbers have improved slightly over what you are currently seeing on this slide. And the total change as of November 2020 is now at a negative 2.8%, which is a slight improvement over the negative 4.8% that you see on this particular slide. And the other two lines that you see, the green and the blue line, so the green line talks about the middle wage earners and the blue line is of the low wage earners, so there's a significant drop still in those two sections. Now, this particular slide gives you an idea of the consumer spending in the metro Atlanta area here. And as you can see, consumer spending has also improved since April 2020. The blue line represents the total spending, which is down 4.6% as of January 2021 as compared to January of 2020. Retail spending has dropped, had dropped initially when the pandemic hit, but has been on the rise and is now higher than the pre-pandemic levels by 14.5%. Consumer spending in the hotel and restaurant industry has not recovered the same way as spending in the retail and other sectors. And spending in this sector is still down by 35.3%, which is still huge as compared to January of 2020 and is expected to take time to recover to the pre-pandemic levels. This chart depicts the percentage change in CPI for the metro, for the metro Atlanta area. And as can be seen here, CPI has been, had been dropping before the pandemic started, but has been rising since April 2020 and is now kind of slightly below 2%. This table here includes a forecast on some key economic indicators compiled by Moody's. And your package should include a more detailed Moody's report that should also have this particular table in there. And as I had mentioned on a previous slide, GDP is expected to grow over the next few years and hit about 4%. And according to predictions by experts, 2022 is expected to be a good year economically. Unemployment rate will continue to drop as the economy continues to recover from the pandemic, sorry, unemployment rate. And then the personal income and median household income are also expected to grow in the coming years. So that was basically a broad overview of the local economy. We will now move into the next section of the presentation, which is the five-year forecast of the general fund. So when preparing the five-year forecast, we work with certain assumptions based on the data and knowledge that we have at that particular time. In forecasting the revenues for the next five years, we did make certain assumptions. And this slide kind of gives you a picture of some of the assumptions that we have made and this slide is particularly reflective of the assumptions that we've made for the property tax revenues. So the FY 2022 projection for property taxes is based on the 2020 digest. And we have built-in estimates for exemptions, appeals and new growth. The mileage rate has been kept constant at the current 4.955 mils throughout the forecast period. So here is a chart that shows the actual property tax revenues for the last four years, the estimate for the current fiscal year and then the projection for the next five years. The property tax revenue, which is represented by the blue line, is expected to grow at a steady rate over the forecast period. And the Ross digest represented by the red bars is also expected to grow during the next five years. Last year, we were hit by the pandemic right in the middle of the budget process and we had to revise our revenue estimates for several of our lines based on the knowledge that we had at the time. And we had budgeted a very conservative number for our sales tax revenue due to a lot of unknowns at the time. But we have been providing quarterly updates and have revised our budget the last two quarters based on the actual revenue we have been receiving. So based on the current trend in the revenue, we are estimating our sales tax revenue for the fiscal year 2021 to be about $24.8 million. And assuming that the positive trend will continue and the economy will continue to recover, we have grown the revenues, the sales tax revenues for fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023 by 5%. And then for fiscal year 2024 and 2025 by 3%. And by, and for fiscal year 2026 by 2% and you'll see these numbers on the next slide. So here on this slide gives you some more assumptions that we have made while putting this five-year forecast together for both revenues and expenditures. And for our other revenues, those projections have been based on the rate of inflation, they have been grown by the CPI. And then the operating expenses, we have assumed the continuation of current levels of service. And the operating expenses also include adjustments from the class and comp study that was done recently. And then we have also included some of the maintenance capital projects that are part of the FY 2021 adopted CIP. And the one-time capital is not being programmed into this forecast as of now. The next couple of slides talk about the employee compensation study and this was presented to all of you at the January 11th Mayor and Council Work Session, our director, Mr. Ryan Luckett, had talked in detail about this, so I'm not going to go into too much detail here, but I'll just quickly review what was presented. So the total cost of recommend, or the total cost that is recommended as part of the class and comp study that has been done is 5.6 million, a little over 5.6 million, and this is for all funds put together. And for the general fund, it will be a little over 4.4 million dollars. So we have reviewed the options of potentially phasing in the implementation of the comp study results. And if council decides to implement the phased approach, then the first phase would be implemented on March 1st of 2021. And the second phase would be implemented on January 1 of 2022. The full budgetary impact of the phased approach in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023 is presented in the table that you see on this slide. And as I mentioned on an earlier slide, this has been included in the five-year forecast that is being presented to you. So based on all of these previous slides where we talked about the assumptions that have been made, this chart depicts the change in the revenues and expenditures, including some maintenance capital over the five-year period. And as per the forecast, we are able to pay for our operating expenditures with our operating revenues, provided all assumptions remain constant over the forecast period. This chart here depicts the change in the general fund, fund balance over the forecast period. The bottom area of the chart is the ending fund balance, which stays constant at around 23.6 million over the five-year period. The blue section, which is the middle section, represents the reserve by policy. And the top section is the fund balance above reserve, which kind of diminishes in the outer years of the forecast, as you will see in this particular slide. So this was the forecast for the general fund, I will now move on to the enterprise funds. And we will start with the water and sewer fund here. So the basic assumptions on inflation, employee compensation and health benefits are the same as that for the general fund. And the revenues in this particular fund have been grown by 4% of a fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024, as per the current approved rate increase. And for the latter two fiscal years, that is 2025 and 2026, we have assumed a rate increase of 2.5%, I mean, though this has not been approved yet, but we've taken that as an assumption. So the forecast also includes revenues from meter sales and capacity fees and increase in sales from new growth and development. And then the, on the expenditure side, the operating expenses have been grown by half of CPI. And this forecast also includes the adjustment from the class and comp study. So based on all the financial assumptions listed on the previous slide, this is what the fund is expected to look like over the next five years. The black line represents the unrestricted fund balance at the end of each fiscal year and it declines steadily in the outer years. As mentioned in the previous slide, for forecast purposes, we have assumed a 2.5% rate increase in fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025. But the rates will have to be revisited in fiscal year 2024, hopefully during that particular budget process. For the solid base fund, again, the basic assumptions on inflation, employee compensation and health benefits are the same as for the general fund. And we have also built and built in an increase for the transfer station contract and the yard waste and recycling contracts based on our agreements with the service providers. And as you will see on this particular slide, so we also have the rate increase, the residential rate increase and the commercial rate increase of 3%. That was approved, that is as per the current approved, that, sorry, that has already been approved by Mayor and Council for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. And as you can see on this particular chart, the table here, for the outer years, that is of fiscal year 2025 and 2026, we have assumed a rate increase of 2% in this particular fund. Then the forecast also includes revenues from new growth and development, we have taken that into consideration here. And similarly here as well, in this particular fund too, the operating expenses have been grown by half of the CPI. And we have also included the adjustments that have come in from the class and comp study in this particular fund too. So assuming everything else remains constant, this is what the solid base fund will look like over the next five years, based on the assumptions in the previous slide. The ending unrestricted fund balance, as you can see, starts to flatten out in the outer years. The revenues, and I'd like to mention here that the revenues also include $100,000 from the building of the new transfer station, assuming that we will allow neighboring cities to use it and we will charge for it. We now move on to the stormwater fund. And again, here, the basic assumptions on inflation, employee compensation and health benefits are the same as for the other funds. And the revenues here have been grown by 2.5% as per the current approved rate increase for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. And again, in the, for the other two years, for 2025 and fiscal year 2026, we have assumed a rate increase of 2.5%. And again, here in this fund, the operating expenses have been grown by half of CPI. And we have also included the adjustment from the class and comp study in here. So this is what the chart looks like based on these assumptions and as you can see, the ending unrestricted fund balance for the stormwater fund kind of starts to flatten out in the outer years. We now will move on to the budget calendar to discuss some few important dates that are part of the budget process. So we have another budget work session coming up on February the 22nd. And as you will see on this particular slide, we haven't put the topics right now against each of these budget work sessions because we are still trying to figure that out as to which particular topic will be discussed at which budget work session. So, and then we have three budget work sessions scheduled for the month of March, the first one on the 8th, the second one on the 22nd and then a third one on the 29th of March. And we plan to present the And we plan to present the proposed budget to Mayor and Council on April the twenty-sixth. And then we will have another budget work session on April twenty-eighth, where the department heads will present their proposals to Mayor and Council. And then on May tenth is when we will, we propose to have the first reading of the budget ordinance and mileage rate ordinance. And the second reading is proposed to be held on May twenty-fourth. That is the end of my presentation, ma'am. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council, have any questions? No questions from council? Quiet group tonight, I wonder if it's going to stay that way. We don't have anyone in the public that would like to speak, so speak now, forever hold your peace until our next budget meeting. But as of right now, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.